All right, this is a call to order for the Richfield Planning Commission Meeting, June 25. The first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the Planning Commission Meeting of May 29.
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
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 So moved. The next thing on our agenda is we have an opportunity for public comments about anything that's not on the agenda. So if you are here and would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda, feel free to get up and do that now. Anyone? No? Okay, we will close this portion of the public hearing. Do we need to make a motion for that? No, great. All right, we'll go on to other business on the agenda. The first thing is the consideration of the 20-
Madam Chair.
Yeah, sorry.
You'll want to approve the agenda first.
All right, so can we approve today's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
So moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'd just like to tell everybody, this is the first time I'm chairing this meeting, so there we go.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so now it is time to get to the next business, other business on this agenda, and that is consideration of the 2023 Capital Improvement Program. So staff, would you like to take it away?
Yes, thank you. The CIB and the CIP are the Capital Improvement Program and Capital Improvement Budget. Tonight, we're going to hear a presentation from Finance Manager Chris Regis. The action of the commission tonight is to listen to Chris's summary, and what you'll be doing is approving, or I'm sorry, finding that the Capital Improvement Plan and Capital Improvement Budget are consistent with the city's comprehensive plan.
Thank you. You're doing fine, by the way. As Melissa said, tonight, we're going to go over the 2019 Capital Improvement Budget and 2020-2023 Capital Improvement Plan. Projects are identified by city commissions, departments, and the HRA. The preliminary report is generated by the city manager and presented to the Planning Commission, which we're doing tonight. As Melissa said, the Planning Commission then reviews the projects based on the following consideration: proposed projects conformant to the comprehensive plan. The CIB/CIP, as recommended by the Planning Commission, is then returned to the city manager, who then incorporates it into and normalizes it into the final city budget. As it stands tonight, the 2019 Capital Improvement Budget is just a little bit over $31 million. The 2020-2023 Capital Improvement Plan is at $78.2 million. Some of the major projects in 2019 is year five of the six-year Millen overlay project. Estimated project cost over the entire six years is $19.5 million. 2019 will be essentially the final year of the 66 reconstruction project. Estimated project cost is $61.2 million. I'm sure everybody will be happy with that. 2019 continuation of the 77th Street underpass, estimated project cost of $25. And then finally, the Lyndale Avenue reconstruction, estimated cost of $10 million. All of those are 2019 projects. Also in 2019, the planned water meter upgrade, which will be spread over four years, at a total cost of $4.1 million. In 2020, 65th Street reconstruction, estimated project cost of $8 million. And then in 2022, 76th Street West reconstruction, estimated cost of $5.3 million. Then beyond 2023, these projects have been on here the last couple of years, they're slowly working their way down. Humboldt Avenue-Lakeshore Drive reconstruction at $4 million, and then Nicollet Avenue and Penn Avenue reconstruction at $13. And that is all I have. It's pretty brief and pretty succinct, but I will try to answer any questions that you have.
Does anybody have any questions? Do we need to take any action on this?
Yes, you need to ask for a motion. You're making a motion to recommend approval and to find that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So you will now call the motion.
All right. Would anybody like to make a motion to agree that this is in, this is consistent with the comprehensive plan?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Capital Improvement Program and Budget and decide that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
I second.
All in favor say aye.
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 All right, so moved. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, next up on the agenda is public hearings, a public hearing to consider a resolution authorizing an interim use permit to allow Bloomington Honda to use city-owned property at 770 Pillsbury Avenue for employee parking. Staff, do you have something to add?
Yes, so due to parking constraints on their property, Richfield Bloomington Honda has been using the city-owned property at 770 Pillsbury Avenue since 2013. Honda is requesting to continue leasing the property for temporary use as an employee parking lot. 770 Pillsbury Avenue is the portion of the former city garage site that lies south of 77th Street. This property is zoned mixed-use neighborhood, and parking as a standalone use is not permitted. Therefore, an interim use permit is necessary. Honda's current interim permit expires on July 31 of this year, and they have now applied for a new three-year interim use permit. Staff is recommending approval of an 18-month interim use permit, effective August 1 of this year, and terminating on January 31, 2020. At the discretion of the Community Development Director, the interim use permit may be extended up to three times in six-month increments, not to exceed a total length of three years. A proposal for apartments on this site went to a council work session back in August of 2017, but that proposal has not progressed any further. No other redevelopment plans are proposed for this property at this time. Should the council grant approvals for another use of the property, terms included in the interim use permit and the lease would allow the city to terminate these agreements. In order to approve the interim use permit, the council must find that the temporary nature of the permit warrants waiving certain provisions of the zoning code, which in this case is the prohibition of parking, of a parking lot as a standalone use. And that concludes the staff report.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for staff?
Yes, do you know if there's a long-term plan with Honda to find available parking?
Tim Carter from Richfield Bloomington Honda is here tonight. Perhaps he would help me answer this. The long-term plan is that the planned unit development plans for that site included a parking ramp. Perhaps Tim would be willing to give us an update on the status of that ramp.
Tim Carter, General Manager, Richfield Bloomington Honda, Richfield Bloomington Mitsubishi, and BMW. Our plans for the ramp are in process right now. Once we built the facility and the tax statements came, we were pretty much in shock as to how much they went up, to the tune of about $1.5 million, and that was way beyond what we had anticipated based on the reports that we thought that they were going to come in at. So we are dealing with some assessors on that amount, and we are waiting to the conclusion of that study. Once we get that, we will move forward and take a look at the plans that we were wanting to put a parking ramp on that spot by 2020.
Thank you for the question.
Public hearing to answer questions, or would we do that now?
I would suggest opening the public hearing.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, or would anyone like to make a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved. All right, does anybody have any questions? Would anybody else like to get up and speak on this?
Madam Chair, I will move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
So moved. Okay. All right, well, since it sounds like nobody really has any questions, um, oh, go ahead.
I just have one question about the motion. It says approve a resolution authorizing a three-year interim use permit. Would this be technically up to a three-year interim use permit, or does it have to be phrased that way or not?
That's correct, you're, yeah, that's correct. It should say authorize an 18, the, the language in the staff report should say authorize an 18-month interim use permit with, yeah, and then built, built into that resolution, it's specifically stated in the resolution how those, how those six-month extensions would be issued.
So the motion should be stated as 18-month then? Okay. Well, I, I make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing an 18-month interim use permit to allow a standalone parking facility at 770 Pillsbury Avenue. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so moved. All right, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider a request for a variance to allow, allow a larger accessory building at 6826 Humboldt Avenue South.
All right, so the property located at 6826 Humboldt Avenue is in the single-family residential zoning district. The property owner is proposing to add an accessory storage building that is larger than what is ordinarily permitted. Properties, single-family properties are allowed up to a possible, a possible four different types of accessory buildings, which could include a detached garage, greenhouse, storage building, or shed, or a gazebo. Detached garages can be up to 1,000 square feet in area and 14 feet in height. Then the other, the other smaller accessory buildings, including greenhouses, storage buildings, can be up to 175 square feet and 12 feet in height. The total of all accessory buildings on a property can be up, cannot exceed 1,200 square feet. The applicant in this case is proposing to build a shed or storage building that is 192 square feet in area with a proposed height of 13 feet. So that's exceeding, exceeding the square footage by 17 feet and the height by one foot. The layout of this property presents some challenges for adding the types of accessory buildings that are allowed. The house was built with a tuck-under style garage with no room to expand that due to the change in elevation on the property. If the lot were flat, it would be possible to, it would be possible to build an addition off the rear of the existing garage. Additionally, it is not possible to add a detached garage in the rear yard because the layout of the house on the property does not provide enough width to add a driveway on either side. Due to these constraints, the property owner is requesting a variance. Currently, there are no accessory structures on the property, so it's just the attached tuck-under garage. There's no detached garage or any other shed on there currently. The aggregate area of the existing attached garage and the proposed shed would be approximately 934 square feet, which is less than the permitted 1,200 square feet. Since it is not possible to build a detached garage in this lot, it seems reasonable to allow a storage building that is slightly larger in both footprint and height. Finding, finding that the proposal meets the requirements necessary to issue a variance, staff is recommending approval. And that concludes the staff report. I believe the applicants are here to answer any questions they might have. Thanks.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicants?
I just have one question in general. Is this like a prefab unit that you guys are planning on installing, or is this something you're going to build yourself?
Could you approach the podium, please? Thanks.
Thank you.
And could you state your name?
My name's Tom Cray, 6826 Humboldt. My wife and I have lived in Richfield for 30 years and 24 at this current location. So the question was, have we, is it prefab? No, I will be constructing it. I purchased engineered blueprints, so everything's detailed and in-depth, so it's, it's an engineered plan.
I was just curious, but that's, you know, since it's kind of a prefab set of plans, I'll just consider that prefab. So, okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question for either staff or Mr. Cray. There's a neighbor that is right next to you who wrote a letter of support for it. Are they, are they on the east side of you where the structure will be built in the back, or are they on the west side?
Yes, I am aware they, they let me know that they created a letter, and they are on the north side of us, so it is on their side, the property.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion on this item?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
You'll want to make sure that no one else wants to speak at the public hearing, and then close the public hearing first.
Would anybody else like to speak? All right, well, we can close this public hearing. Would you like to make a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, Madam Chair, I moved to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
So moved.
Madam Chair, I'd also like to make a motion to approve a resolution granting a variance to allow an accessory shed that is 192 square feet in area and 13 feet tall at 6826 Humboldt Avenue South.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so moved. All right, the next item up on the agenda is a public hearing to consider amendment to a planned unit development to allow construction of a K through eight school at 6500 Nicollet Avenue. It's the current Bremer Bank site. Staff?
Thank you. Partnership Academy, a public charter school, has been based in Richfield since 2002, operating out of leased space at Church of the Assumption, which is at 30577th Street East. Partnership Academy has been searching for a site to build a new school facility in Richfield for several years, and currently has the Bremer Bank property at 6500 Nicollet Avenue under contract. The applicant proposes to demolish the bank building and construct a two-story school facility on the site. The proposed building, an outdoor play area, would have frontage along Nicollet Avenue with parking provided in surface lots to the west of the building and adjoining the existing parking areas for hub shopping center. Bus circulation would make use of an existing driveway south of the proposed building. The new school facility will allow Partnership Academy to increase enrollment from the current 284 students in grades K through five, up to a maximum enrollment of approximately 470 students in grades K through eight. If approved, demolition of the bank building would begin this fall, with the new school building projected to be complete by May of 2019. The Bremer Bank building was constructed in 1967, and is part of a larger planned unit development, or PUD, along with the overall hub shopping center and the vacant grocery store site. The applicant is requesting an amendment to this PUD to allow construction of the school building. No other changes are proposed elsewhere in the hub PUD at this time. Deviations from code requirements are minimal and primarily relate to adequate on-street parking supply for school staff. Oh, onsite, of onsite parking school supply for school staff, onsite parking supply for school staff. The applicant has provided a narrative addressing this issue, and a detailed discussion of parking requirements can be found in the policies section of the staff report. Finding that the proposal meets requirements, staff recommends approval of the amended planned unit development conditional use permit and final development plan. And then, we don't usually read this part, the historical context, but I thought this was just kind of a neat aside about this property. So prior to the bank building being built in 1967, the Richfield Theater stood on this site from 1947 to 1967. So you may have seen that pop up, if you've ever seen the, the Richfield, the Richfield History Book that the Historical Society puts out, and I think our city Facebook page has done it on their Throwback Thursday post, they've shown the Richfield Theater, so if anyone was ever wondering where that was, it's where the Bremer Bank stands today. So that concludes the staff report.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for staff?
Yes. How, so with placing a school within a retail restaurant area, how will this affect current and future liquor licenses? Will this therefore handicap new development business types that the hub area is able to attract?
It wouldn't affect anything, any businesses with regards to liquor licenses. There are no spacing requirements. There are spacing requirements attached to a number of uses, including things like pawn, pawn shops, gun, gun sales, auto body repair, gas stations, that there's kind of varying, there's usually a, it varies from 250 feet, 300, 300 feet, 1,000 feet, depending on what the use is, and that spacing is usually measured from schools, places of, places of assembly, that type of thing, but nothing to do with liquor sales has a buffer.
So, so the pawn shop that was down the street, I believe, on Nicollet, that I think is now closed, what would that buffer be?
So that, that's correct, yeah, that shop is closed, and actually, it would have been, under the current zoning code, it would have been considered non-conforming because it actually backed up directly to residential property. Under, I guess, under the current zoning code, there are, there are relatively few places in the city where something like gun sales, adult, adult-oriented businesses, that type of thing, because of those buffer requirements, typically just from the requirement that they have to be a certain distance from residential, usually limits them to, to large shopping center sites. So you're right that this, the placement of this school along Nicollet Avenue here probably will affect some of that buffer distance in terms of where those businesses could go, but wouldn't have too many, it wouldn't have effects, basically in the, in the rest of the city, those are largely determined by where residential zoning is present.
I do have another question for your staff. You know, so I noticed the stipulation in the resolution that limits the enrollment to 300 students until proof of an agreement for a cross-access agreement for parking with the hub. And, you know, I, I like, you know, that stipulation, and I'm hoping that they can secure that, but is there, is there any event that the school isn't able to secure that permit, does this have the opportunity to come up for them to apply for variance on that again versus having to remove the play area? Because I would really hate to see the play area have to go in lieu of parking. It's not a school anymore.
And I think, yeah, Commissioner Penn, I think staff would agree, we would also not like to see the play area removed, you know, per the, the plan that they showed for proof of parking that could go there. I, I'll let the applicant maybe speak to that in greater detail. I assume there are, I assume there are probably state requirements for schools that they have to have some amount of outdoor play area, but as far as the parking goes, so that condition that to increase enrollment beyond 300 students, that they provide proof of parking, we did include in there that the requirement can be reduced or eliminated at the Community Development Director's discretion, including, including evidence that they're simply not using the parking that they have. If they have a large, if they, if they find that they have a large percentage of employees that are carpooling, taking public transit, walking or biking, and they're just not using the 50 spaces that they are planning, I think that would, sufficient evidence that there's available parking would be good enough to rescind or lessen the requirement, as well as the possibility of if Nicollet Avenue or 65th Street is reconstructed in the future with on-street parking, I think we would also, you know, look at that as, as evidence that there's ample parking in the, in the district as a whole.
Okay, so in general, there are multiple routes to reevaluate that if the time comes?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep, I think, I think probably staff and the applicant would look at the, the proof of parking plan showing a parking lot being built where they're planning the outdoor play area. I think we would probably all look at that as the, you know, the very last resort.
Okay, quick question. So how does, how does this fit into when we're looking at the comprehensive plan of what would go into the hub, you had Plan A and Plan B, you know, just as future thoughts, this kind of seems to go contrary to Plan B. Any thoughts on that?
Yes, Commissioner Rudolph, the comprehensive plan that we're moving forward calls for a mix of uses in the hub area. Really, it talks about walkability, a variety of uses, things that are going to pull people to the area to keep it vibrant. I do, I don't think that this is contrary to that plan. I think the idea of having this volume of students and parents could actually help this area a lot, particularly, I know a lot of people would really like to see a grocery store in any redevelopment that happens at the hub, and a place where people are coming to pick up their kids seems like a great place to then stop and get your groceries. So I think this fits in. They are working with the owners of the hub to make sure that walkability is important and that any future plans in the hub work with this site design. So I don't think that it's contrary to what we've been looking at for the last 18 months.
I'd just like to add to that a little bit. The idea that I think this school would offer a ton of vibrancy to this area of the hub, and I do like seeing that the owner of the hub is excited about having Partnership Academy next to them. My son went to a school on 24th and Nicollet, and all of the businesses thrived based, because of the parents who are constantly there, you know, going to the pizza shop across the place, going to the grocery store, and so it was actually very, very busy for those businesses during school time. So I think it would just be so much more exciting to have a school that has done so much for Richfield right in that area, in like the core of our area. So I'm, I'm excited about this plan.
I have a question, if you had any feedback from Richfield Medical Group, which is just to the north?
Yes, Commissioner Quam, we did, the two of us, we did meet with the Richfield Medical Group last week. They did express some concerns over parking. They've, Richfield Medical Group for many years has been parking on the, the portion of the Bremer Bank or Partnership Academy site that is directly west of their building. The Richfield Medical Group, I think, you know, maybe early on, they weren't exactly sure of where their property lines were, what, what parking they owned versus whether the parking behind them belonged to the hub. I think it was a surprise to them to find out that, that parking lot actually belonged to the bank and not to the, their overall hub property, but, so we, we did meet and talk with them about their concerns. They, they do have probably both short-term and long-term concerns of where their employees are going to park. They like to keep their parking lot open for, for their clients who come in. However, they, under our zoning code, they do, they do provide enough parking for a building of that size, so this, you know, that they are conforming, I guess, on their site, and we suggested to them several avenues, you know, to, to make it work, I guess, both in the near term and long term, both reaching out to the hub to see if there's some surface parking on, on the hub's property that they could use, reaching out to the, the property to the north across 65th Street, which is the Liang Chin and the vacant- reaching out to the, the property to the north across 65th Street, which is the Liangqin and the vacant former pawn shop there, because they've probably got some, with one of the stores closed there, they probably got some surplus. So we have, you know, we understand their concerns, that, that they want to have enough parking to continue serving the community, but they are also limited by what is available on their property. And that's not something that can really, I guess, you know, parking that they don't, taking away parking that they don't own isn't something that can be really used, you know, in, as a factor in determining land use approvals for another property. But staff will continue to work with them and continue to, you know, help where we can to find parking off-site that they could use to meet their needs.
I guess I just meant the parking that they do own, concern about that being used for the school.
So they, the parking that they, the parking that they do own at Richfield Medical Center, that is, that you can currently access that either from 65th Street or from Niccolat and the, where there's a shared access with the bank. And that access is actually going away where the, if you look at the site plan where the play area is proposed, the, the access into Richfield Medical Group from Niccolat will actually go away. So there shouldn't be any spillover of folks, you know, driving into the school and then winding up in the medical parking lot. I think this will actually, by the medical building only having access off 65th Street, that will hopefully be fairly clear to folks that, that the school is not to park there. And I'm sure as, as neighbors, we, we hope that they, you know, that they, that they stay in communication and, and work out those types of issues.
All right, just lastly, I'm impressed, I mean, they've, you've been, they've been a good school since 2002. That's a pretty good testament to what kind of neighbor they'll be your business, so. Any further questions? All right, we will now open the public hearing. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so moved. The public hearing is open, so if anybody would like to get up and speak. Each person has a five-minute limit, and when you get up to the podium, just state your name and your address and give us your thoughts.
My name is Dr. Maggie McAvoy. I'm a family medicine physician employed by Richfield Medical Group. And this is Dr. John Torbridge, also a family medicine physician employed by Richfield Medical Group. We became aware of the plans to relocate the school shortly, a couple of weeks ago, when we received notice that the parking lot that we lease on the west side of our building, that lease was being terminated to make room for the school. And we, family medicine doctors, we live and breathe with people of all ages and welcome kids into the school to our community. As a neighbor also to the hub, we are also concerned about where we can get adequate parking for our patients without jeopardizing any of the parking spaces that we own to the east of the building for our patients. So I appreciate the concern with that access site going away. We still have space for our patients. I'm a little concerned about, we can't really, really control the parking ability either to the north of the building. That lot is for sale as well. That controls, that holds the lands, the Liangqin and the pawn, former pawn location is, I believe, for sale for about $1.1 million, which is certainly beyond where we would be able to look as a small primary care, independently owned clinic. It's not a sure thing that we would have space at the hub for our approximately 24 part-time and full-time employees to make that contiguous. As we know, we're neighbors to the 65th Street access, and if there's looking at any changes made to 65th Street, that could alter our ability to even get in and out of our own property. In addition, the space that we rented from Bremer Bank and paid lease to also holds our two large dumpsters that we use for, one, just routine office waste, and then secondly, for recycling. There's no hazardous material that's stored in those dumpsters. Those are on our, those are right on the rented property right now, but we would need to move those to a different location that would probably be more unsightly or have to be a budding up against where the kids playground would be, or moving those to the front of the building. And that's maybe a little bit of an inconvenience. It may also cause us to do some more construction at our site at our expense to accommodate it. You know, once again, we're happy to have neighborhood, we love the viable community. We've been there since the 1950s and have taken care of generations of patients and their families. So we welcome the, welcome the school and the community here. We certainly were happy to be good neighbors, but we just want to make sure that we can all reach, reach an agreement in something that's workable and feasible for all of us for adequate parking for our staff and as well as our patients. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Lisa Hendricks, and I'm the executive director and one of the founders at Partnership Academy. The report that was listed in the packet, it was pretty detailed about the project that we want to do, but I just want to provide a little bit more historical context. We've been in Assumption Church, as the report said, since 2002, and we were a small school at that point, just 115 students and 12 staff. And now here we are in 2018, and almost 300 staff and nearly six, or sorry, 300 students, that would be a lot of staff to manage, and nearly 60 staff. And we've been looking, because of, you know, really parent, parent demand and desire to expand into middle school, really since 2007, so almost 10, 11 years now that we've been looking. When the economy took a little bit of a turn, we, we put that on, on hold for a little bit, but then re-engaged that desire to grow about three, four years ago. And also, there's quite a few schools that our students used to go to for middle school that have closed recently. That has also driven our desire to want to provide this opportunity for, for our students and for our families. And I feel like we've been really good neighbors where we are located and hope to, to be the same and, and promise to be the same in the new area. And, you know, our school is really the name Partnership Academy is, we're based on partnerships, that's our namesake. And so I'm happy to meet the, the staff from the medical group tonight. And we've, you know, in our kind of entrepreneurial, innovative minds have thought, wow, there's a medical center there. We have other partnerships with Fairview Southdale, the Dental Mobile Southside Family. So we'd like to entertain some ideas, I think, down the road for, for a partnership that could work with our families. So I know that parking on the site, you know, has been interesting to work through, but I think all the parties are really committed to working together on, on getting over that hump, if you will. But we're really, really excited about this particular site. We've looked at numerous sites, we considered leaving Richfield because there wasn't a lot of open sites available. We looked Bloomington and South Minneapolis, and then we just really felt like Richfield is where we've been and where we want to be. So we're, we're really excited about this opportunity and this opportunity for our students and families too, that it's really exciting for us and for them. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question or two of the applicant? So I just had a couple of questions for you. Are most of the students, I apologize that this is already spelled out elsewhere in, in your letters, but are, are a lot of these Richfield students like residents, or are they kind of from all over the metro? What's kind of the makeup in general of?
Sure, sure, Commissioner Penn, is it Penn? Penn, yes. About half of our students are from Richfield, and then the other half are between Bloomington and South Minneapolis. And demographically, about, pretty much 99% of our students are students of color. About 85% qualify for free and reduced lunch. 80% are considered English learners, English language learners, or as we like to call them, emergent bilingual students, so.
And then I just had another question about just hours in general for like pickup and drop-off? Like what's kind of your, what are your peak times, do you think?
So nine in the morning, so parent drop-off would be around 9:00 a.m. And I would say about 90% of our students ride the school bus. And so we have about 10% that are doing parent drop-off. And then school day ends at four, and so there's pickups that happen around 4:00 p.m. as well.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just related to busing for students, where do you envision pickup and drop-off being at the, at the school itself?
I think right now we have, and Ben, you may need to, to help me with this one a little bit more.
Chair Holberg, planning commissioners, you can, oh, I'm just going to refer you to page 53 of the packet if you were looking for the site plan. It's kind of hard to see, but it does show a bus, basically bus queuing in that curve around, kind of around the south and west sides of the building, the applicant will explain in more detail.
Evening, my name is Ben Ford, I'm with Raider and Associates. We're the civil engineering and surveying firm that's been hired by the school to help them through this process. I don't know that I have that much more to add, but in what Matt said, we've got a, a one-way drive coming off of Niccolat where buses would pull in exclusively off of Niccolat. There's staged area for eight or nine buses as you wrap around the south and west side of the building where buses would be staged in the afternoon for picking up in the morning. They're not, they don't have to be staged, they would just flow through that area and drop off students.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I see that now I zoomed in and those are, those are buses.
What are, what are the number of bus, buses that you anticipate, you said eight or nine fit in the?
Yeah, so right now I believe we have eight buses, so it would be nine or 10 probably maxed.
All right, thank you, are there any other? I have a question, Ms. Hendricks. Have you ever surveyed your staff to ask how many drive and how many take the bus by any chance?
Yes, well, not like officially, but just, we kind of have information about eight to 10 folks either ride their bike, take city transportation or public transportation or carpool. But what's exciting about this site is it's more in line with public transportation. So I actually anticipate it being probably more staff that will choose to do that because of its location to public transit.
You said eight to 10?
Mm-hmm.
Take public transportation?
Or carpool. So combination, yeah. Or ride their bikes, we're an active group over there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I have a quick question for the, the doctors too. Or maybe staff can answer, but you mentioned you're losing your leasing space of parking. Would the school be purchasing that or leasing also?
Thank you, we record, and these, these are broadcast.
Sure, thank you. My understanding is that we had leased that from Bremer Bank when they're part of Foren shoe. I'm not sure the agreement that's been worked with the school and how that is set up. Even if we could carve off a section of that, something for a few parking spaces or somewhere to put our dumpsters, if we could leave them there would be really, really helpful to us and to our staff to make it, you know, fit together with the community.
Thank you.
And again, just for clarification for staff, for the whole parking arrangement, it's, it, you made it sound like, you know, they're, they're currently, the Richfield Medical Group currently has, according to code, that are, according to zoning ordinance, that they have adequate space according to the building size and the uses, although they've been using other space and leasing that, so they had supplemental.
That's correct, it sounds like they've been parking, so in the, it's kind of hard to see on these plans what the, critical to this discussion is what the property lines look like. For the bank slash school property. It's, yeah, gosh, it's really hard to see on here, but again, on page 53, if you still have that site plan up, you can see the dot dash line that kind of extends north to the northwest of the proposed building, that just blends right into the, into the existing hub parking lot. Yes, so that, that dot dash line, that, that is the extent, it's a really odd-shaped property, but that's the extent of the, of the existing bank property. The, the property lines are not moving at all. So Partnership Academy has a purchase agreement with Bremer Bank to buy the, the entire bank property, including that large accessory parking area to the northwest of it. The, the Richfield Medical Building owns the parking in front of their building, between their building and Niccolat Avenue. My understanding of their operations is that they were parking all or nearly all of their employees on the bank property where they were leasing to, to be able to free up their entire parking lot for customers. Whereas now, I, I guess to summarize their concern, it's that their employees would have nowhere to park if they, if they want to keep their parking available for cus, for patients.
All right, do we have any further questions? Is it feasible to keep the dumpsters there somehow, or is that, would that not be a comp? Because it sounds like both organizations are doing great things.
That's, that's generally a civil issue between the property owners. As it stands today, we, we don't know if there are, a situation like this would require a cross-access agreement where you have something on another property. We don't know if, if those agreements are in place or not, or if this has just been an informal, you know, both of these buildings have been around since the 1960s, so it's highly possible that a lot of these arrangements were just kind of unwritten handshake agreements between property owners. But that's something that would have to be worked out between the two of them.
All right, any other questions? Okay, I think we could close the public hearing. Would you like to make a motion? Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll move to close the public hearing. A second? A second. All in favor say aye.
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 So moved, it is closed. So, at this point, we would be making a resolution to approve the, to move that we approve the amendment to allow construction of Partnership Academy at 6500 Niccolat Avenue?
Yes, Madam Chair, you'll be asking if there's any additional discussion or if someone would like to make a motion.
Is there any additional discussion on this?
Yeah, I just think in general, I'm, I'm just excited to see it happen and echo a lot of your sentiment on this. You know, I know the parking issues are always something that are hard to navigate through, and I, I really hope that in good faith, both organizations can work together to help figure this out. You know, it seems like cross-access agreements are probably going to have to be used through multiple partners to make this happen. But I, I don't see an issue if everybody is willing to work together on this. And so I, I don't know, I think I'm inclined to vote for it. But, you know, I guess I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of the amended PUD, the conditional use permit, and the final development plans for a K-38 school at 6500 Niccolat Avenue.
And I'll second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, well, the amendment passes, so congratulations. All right, well, next up on the agenda is liaison reports. So first, we can start with the Community Services Advisory Commission.
I'm sorry, I have no report right now.
Okay. City Council update?
No report.
HRA?
Oh, no report.
Richfield School Board?
Yes, two things, the STEM pool, which you probably saw-
The STEM pool, which you probably saw in the Sun Current, was vacant for 10 years, and they needed it for parking and transportation during the capital referendum process, so the board supported that because of priority. And also, the Richfield High School marching band got second in state, and they'll be in the Fourth of July parade.
Yay. The Transportation Commission. I think that was Sean, so he's not here. Chamber of Commerce, we currently do not have a liaison, I believe. All right, next up is the City Planner's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to remind you all that tomorrow is the Commissioner Recognition Event at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. It's often a thankless job to serve as a volunteer on these commissions, and so I encourage you all to come to this event. It's a chance for the City Council members and the other staff and the other commissions for you to socialize and for us to thank you for the hours that you put in on these commissions. And that's my report.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming and participating in the Planning Commission meeting. Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 All right, adjourned.